And then we go here.
So Jennifer and Brian have done a great job with one of our residents to kind of do it ourselves. It's been working out pretty good, but there is times when we don't, it doesn't happen, you know? But we're not required anymore as long as we have this live meeting. But our residents got used to it. Okay, so they get upset when we can't stream it, you know, but if it is.
It's just one way.
And then you can, you can watch it while you're multitasking, you know? That's right. You can listen to what you want to listen to. That's a good way of, yeah. Yeah, I could care about that.
Well, it usually does, but I don't know what.
But sometimes they have problems in there too, so it's. But we still do it the old fashioned way. We have our meeting and then we have the minutes. But it makes it easier for the minutes too because.
Oh, we can just.
It's easier to go back because then you can. Sometimes on the recording, you might not, you might think, oh, who said that? Now you can go back and say, oh, I know the mayor said it, or I know Ray said it, or.
Would you please, could you go in on your computer and see if you're getting audio and video?
Certainly can.
Hello? Yeah. Okay, we may not be able to do this, which isn't the end of the world. I don't know why. No, no, it should, it should just go to this.
You know, Mike and Jim, I didn't. I don't know. We had more than one, I pulled out of a hat who would go first. I know, Mike, you entered last time, so I didn't know if you really even wanted, you know, to go through all that or just say, hey, you know, however council felt. So do you, who wants to go first? I'm just, does it matter? I mean, I could pick, I could have you pick a name out of, oh, we'll wait a couple of minutes. We'll wait a couple of minutes, yeah. Yeah, I'll let you know, Mike. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Yes.
Since Mike gave his, you know, his entire speech last time.
That's up to him. I don't know.
Yeah, you know, so you don't have to go in, if you don't want to, I mean, we're.
And I, and I told Jim and, and Mike, it's a very informal too. I mean, I don't want you to. We're all residents, you know, and everybody wants to do the right thing and. So. Jennifer, you behave. I did make copies of the letters from both Mr. Conkey and Mr. Cummings too, so you guys should have them. Are we getting ready?
Yep.
Okay.
We're, we're up as far as I can tell. I just can't see our YouTube.
All right, I'll check one more time.
Jennifer, we're waiting. He got on, he says we're streaming. There we are. Okay, there is audio and video. For some reason, our texting or chatting thing is, our window is not coming up.
Yes.
So that's on.
Okay, is everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. Okay, second order of business is roll call. Jennifer Allen.
Here.
Mayor Mary Brenner Miller.
Here.
Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
And Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All of council here, myself, the mayor, and our loss listener, John Montello. Okay. Um, we are also live streaming this meeting. Okay, so item number three is discussion BZA appointment. As everybody is aware, we had a BZA appointment. We advertised it in the journal and, and two issues of the journal. That's something we've been doing. It's a little longer than normal, but I know from years past, people felt they needed notification. They didn't see it the first time or whatever. So we've been doing that. So we did have two, um, letters of interest. One from, uh, Michael Cummings and one from Jim Conkey, and they are both here this evening. So we're gonna talk to them and go from there. I, I did mention to them that we, our council is on recess, but because of a lot of business going on in the village due to economic development, um, there's a good chance we might have a meeting in August and maybe at that time we'll, we'll come to a decision and be able to, you know, appoint, uh, one of the two applicants. But I just want to let you know, it's not because we're trying to drag it out, just like this meeting. It was a special council and special COW meeting to get some business done that we had to get, have to get done, so. Okay, Mike, would you like to go first and? I know Mike did a, a by last time, so if you just want to be kind of, and if anybody has any questions for Mike at that time, then.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, nice to see you all again. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. Uh, when I was here in February, I think, uh, you know, we went over my background and, uh, nothing's really changed. My life story has not changed since then. As I said in February, I, I enjoyed my 17 years I spent on the board previously and, and I hope that the, the residents of the village thought I did a good job and I'd like the opportunity to, uh, participate again. I think I have, uh, the experience, the institutional history, the knowledge and the analytical skills to, uh, do a good job on the zoning board. So with that, I just welcome any questions right now.
Done, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. I, I don't have any questions. I, your, your reputation, your reputation precedes you. You did do a good job on the board zoning appeals and beyond reproach as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, thank you for applying again.
Thanks.
Mayor Progra.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have one question. Thank you again, Mike, being here and applying again. I just have one, uh, question regarding your previous service. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a fairly new resident, so I wasn't here during the 2017 period that you served. Is there any, was there any, any particular event or zoning, uh, challenge that really tested the board during that time you were, that, that kind of sticks out with you?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, the one that always stuck in my mind, it was the most contentious one that we faced was when they wanted to put the Oakwood, um, fire station up, uh, across the street here. And it was very contentious with the residents. It was very difficult. When we had a public meeting, the room was full. So, um, there was a lot of, or there was a certain, uh, number of people who wanted to keep deferring the decision. And I'll give a lot of credit to Duke Owens on the board. He said, no, we're making a decision tonight. We've heard everything we need to hear and we made a decision that night. So, uh, that was a very difficult one. There was a lot of, um, emotion involved.
It sounds like the decision was, of course, not, obviously not to, not to do that.
I think we did allow it, but didn't, they didn't do it or something. I don't remember how it came out.
Right.
We did approve it.
You did approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we ended up putting it here, but it went that we were gonna put it in our, right across from the beverage store. That member in that corner, we were gonna, it was going to be a lot more expensive than what we put here with this dome. We were actually gonna build a little more like a fire station per se, mini ambulance station.
But to, to further follow up on your question, you know, every single hearing in, in a way is difficult because you're telling a resident what they can or can't do with their own property. And, and you have to be, you know, you have to approach that, uh, with, you know, with a lot of respect for other people's property. And, uh, I really enjoyed my time on the board because of the people I served, who we all took it so seriously. I've never lost sight of the importance of recognizing that we're restricting somebody else's use of their property. We have to do that with the most respect.
Thank you. I, I have no questions. I, I know, Mike, we asked the general question, um, the first round and, and I think you kind of answered it, but it was just a general, you know, why you feel you're a good fit for the, for this position. You're already in the position and, and stuff and you kind of explained it, but let's say you had to answer that again.
Okay. Uh, well, obviously my 17 years of experience, and as I said in February, uh, I think it's so important to have the institutional history because each person who comes to the board, their, uh, property, their project is very important to them. And they're gonna want to be sure that they were heard, they were heard thoroughly and that our, um, decisions are consistent with decisions that have, uh, happened in, in the past. And knowing those decisions is very, very critical because when you deny somebody a variance to build an oversized garage or whatever, they're gonna know about every oversized garage that's been built in the village and they're gonna bring it up. And they're gonna ask you why I was denied when somebody else was given the variance. And, and knowing those reasons is very valuable.
Anybody else? Council have any? Questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay, of course. Jim, do you want to come to the mic next, please? Oh, yes, you do.
Thank you for having me.
We're glad you're here.
For those who don't know me or have not met me, James Conkey, I live on Somerset. Moved into the village a little over five years ago. Don't ever plan on moving out. It's a nice niche in here. I've enjoyed the people. Uh, over the years, uh, I've had a couple of chances to speak to some council members one-on-one. Had the zoning people at my property one-on-one. Didn't get what Jim wanted. That's fine. The law was bred to me. I accepted it and complied. But I did like the way I was addressed. I was addressed as a human being. Respect. So with that and with some of my past, uh, what I've done with my life, I saw, I'm gonna call it an ad that you're looking for a person in the position. And granted, I do not have any experience on a zoning board, not at all. But I do believe that we could serve our community. Apply for it, but the community decided if the position is right for me or not. And I'm a firm believer that we need to do so much time in our government and we need to move on. We need to quit having, where our congress and senators have planted their feet for 49, 72 years and they feel as though they're the law. That's not my belief. My belief is to come in and do some time. And when the people around me feel as though it's time for you to move on, we appreciate your service, then we move on. That's all I have.
Jim, looking at your letter of interest, of course, you, you do bring a lot to the table. You, you, I see you have experience in the trades.
Yes, sir.
You know.
I am a local 55 union plumber, state of the heart of Cleveland, licensed in the state of Ohio and have a couple of licenses that extend from that due to my trade.
So you're familiar with building codes, etc.
Yes, sir.
And you kind of, your opening question pretty much answered my question of why you think you would be a good fit. Do you have anything to add to that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
You know, and we're lucky to have these individuals in the village.
We're very.
Lucky to have you. We're lucky to have Mr. Cummings, uh, because you do bring that wealth of knowledge. Unfortunately, we have to choose one person. I just thought, no matter whom we choose, we want the other person, whomever that may be, and we always say this, to please keep applying and please keep, uh, uh, being, um, uh, involved in our community. We people like both you people and it's very much appreciated that you, that you apply. And, um, uh, being, being in the trades, uh, is, is very important to that position. Knowing codes and knowing how to look things up, things like that, uh, is, is very important to, uh, making a, a decision appropriate. So again, thank you for, for applying.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank both of you for, you know, your applications and for, for being here. Got to know you a little bit, uh, in the few years that you've been here and, uh, I, I know you have, uh, good feelings towards this village and, and, uh, Mike, I know, I've known Mike for quite a while. Coached, uh, coached a little baseball with him over the years, so, but it's, uh, again, it's nice that, that we have residents coming out and wanting to be a part of this village the way you do, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Are you guys both sure you really want to be on this board? I mean, you've, you've seen what it's like to deal with and stuff. So, well, I really commend both of you for that because of knowing people are coming upset and angry and wanting their way. So I do thank you guys both. It's awesome.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the tougher positions, no doubt, in, in, in the village. You know, even different than planning that, uh, it's, that's usually more on a positive side. People are coming, you have, and you have a little more latitude on what you can allow, what you can't allow. Where zoning is, you know, if there's not a hardship, it's, um, you don't have a choice. It's a letter of the law. Well, any, any other questions?
Uh, no questions to me. Just also just wanted to thank Mr. Conkey for his coming out tonight and sharing with us and, uh, expanding on his, on his letter of interest as well as Mr. Cummings. Just want to thank both of you gentlemen for coming out tonight and sharing with us.
And as mayor, I, I feel the same way. Want to thank both of you for expressing an interest and coming out tonight. And I'll be in touch. I'll let you, let you know. So like I said, we, normally if we had a, a meeting, um, you know, our regular, you know, two COW meetings and council meeting, but we're on recess, but unfortunately council's not gonna be happy. It looks like we're probably gonna have something in August here, uh, just due to some economic development and stuff, so, you know, talk to council and, you know, and it will give us time to, uh, to talk among ourselves too. Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mike. You're more than welcome to stay, even though our meeting's probably gonna be kind of short. Thank you. Did you guys have any questions before Jim or, or Mike for us? That's one thing I didn't ask. If you guys, okay, all right. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Item four is our legislation, ordinance 2022-7, a NOPEC energized, energized community grant. I know, Ray, I seen your email just before I got here. Angela's on vacation along with, um, Rob. They're both on vacation. I, if you ask me even which project, um, Rob's using it for, I know that was part of the application. I couldn't even tell you right now. I know it's not a real lot. I think it's a lighting project which we've used before. I can get you that information. But it is important that we pass it. Um, we're actually a little bit be, beyond the deadline, but they gave us a extension. Cause I told her we were in recess and stuff, so that's where, so I did make a copy of that one thing. I don't know if that answered it. I do have the whole, like, grant agreement, Ray, if that's what you're looking for. I could give you that. I just didn't print it up because it was just a lot there and I know every, you know, so it's up to you. Ray sent me an email. I don't know if you guys seen it, and that's this afternoon, but I didn't, you know, see it until I got in. Angela's not gonna answer it probably until she comes back, but I could get you, everybody, that information and what project too, when they come back. But it's a grant. Um, there's that, the, I, the reason I, I just printed this too, that was the amount they awarded us. Uh, that's the community name. That's our code. And there was the, the amount they awarded us on that page I gave you, uh, 6379. So I just wanted to, uh.
And that's six, for the people watching, 6,300.
Yeah. Not, not 600, that's. Would be nice, bro.
Yeah, Mayor, we've used that in the past for like what LED lights and things like.
Right.
Mr. Mayor Progra.
Yes.
That was kind of what, what, why I asked the question. I was just curious, what, are there limitations as to how this grant can be used and is that spelled out in the award letter?
Let me.
That's kind of where, what, what I was interested in is, you know, how can, how, how can these funds be used by the community?
I do have the grant agreement in, right here in front of me, so let's see.
They usually are very specific.
Yeah, let's see if it, everything I have here, if it, it, it says more than just energy projects, you know, is what? Okay, let's see. Use of funds guarantee show, use the funds granted by granted for qualified uses outlined in the program policies. And I looked for that. I didn't see the program. Oh, here it is. It might be in one attachment because I do it up. See, I'll be able to get you that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I'll be able to get you. But in, and, uh, Rob's real good at that. I know he had, we have to list the project in the, in the application. Besides giving the legislation, we have to list the project, so. And I'll, I'll get you, I'll get council all of that. I apologize for that, but it's summertime. So it's good, but I'd like, I'd ask that we pass that on suspension. Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
And that would be it. I really don't have anything, um, else. I see there's other, but I don't have anything pertaining to that. The only thing I would say, um, is some of what we're gonna be talking about. The Smith and Olby address that's on here. We might need some legislation and we'll be talking about that in the executive session too. We might need some legislation in, um, August. So that would be the only thing I would have on the program business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Talking about this, uh, NOPEC grant and use for energy purposes, I was curious if Sergeant Gervasi could just answer a question for me. I don't know, did the floodlights ever get fixed in the parking lot down there? Okay, thank you.
Can you, can you say that in the mics or the people?
They did not. The lower lot.
So the floodlights need to be fixed?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe that's what they got on there. Who knows?
I was hoping, but yes, that's the lower lot where our officers are. I just don't like that.
But we can get those fixed. I mean, we'll, like, I'll talk to Rob about that anyways, um.
That is true, with the other people out there with bigger guns.
We don't need a, we don't need a, you know what I mean? If, if they need to be fixed, then we should fix them anyways.
Yeah. Yes, please, please.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, there was a recreation committee meeting on June 21st, 22nd. The purpose of that meeting was to, uh, uh, make a motion to approve meeting minutes of 5322. There was also an information committee meeting on the same day to approve, uh, meeting minutes also of 5322, and that would be the information committee. I have draft minutes of those two meetings that I've supplied to Mr. Nielsen and Ms. Allen, who are committee members. I'm the chair of that committee. And it just describes that we passed those minutes. I.
But it's not, it's not a draft. You draft them. This, this is.
They're drafted.
Actual copy?
Yes, but yeah, but they're, they're not official until we. I asked Mr. Montello if he minds the appropriateness of us making a motion in tonight's meeting to approve these minutes. And he does not have any problem with that. I asked the mayor and the mayor does not have any problem with it. If the committee members does not have any problem with it. So at this time, I would like, for my committee members, I would like to make a motion to approve our recreation committee minutes of 62122.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Allen. Vote on the motion, A.
Yes.
Yes, three yeses approved. And for the information committee meeting on 62122, I would like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Allen. Vote on the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
And three, three As approved for, uh, and again, myself as the chair, Ms. Allen and Mr. Nielsen, uh, sit on that committee. So thank you very much, Mayor, and Mr. Montello, and the rest of your, uh, rest of the council for your indulgence.
I do have one more thing, you know, it's good, just because I just received this, this afternoon. And I'll have to, if Tom's not here, I know he's here, but I'll have to, because he's been saying this. Jack Sharan Jr., Sharan Jr., our, our county, uh, council. And he, um, put out, uh, will soon be releasing his American Rescue Plan Act request for proposals along with the application package. As part of the process, Councilman Sharan would like to invite each city and village to play a role in, uh, for District Six. Uh, I had, I know Tom's been on me about that and, because a lot of communities have different representation and, and they've been filling out their applications, but I have had conversations, uh, with Jack and he said, Mayor, you'll be getting your email. Just be patient. So I got it today. So we'll have to, we'll have to look. It came at 2:37 today from Cynthia Mason, uh, his policy advisor. So, um, just in case anybody was wondering or if you heard other council people talk about it from other communities or other mayors, um, uh, after talking to Jack, he has a way he would like to distribute his funds and he feels that's the appropriate way, and so we're gonna work with him on that and, and, uh, hopefully we'll do well ourselves. So just kind of wanted to share it with you, especially with Mr. Jordan there too. He said, I think you're missing something, Mayor. I said, I don't know. I'm calling him up. And so we, we have been talking quite a bit, so, okay. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment. Second.
Second. Mary Brenner Miller, vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle.
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn, uh, passed 5:00 at 7:27 PM. Now we'll go right into the, does anyone want to take a break? You're ready to go right into special council meeting.
Oh, let's go.
Okay. Like to welcome everybody to the special council meeting of Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 7:28 PM. Roll call, Jennifer Allen.
Yes, here.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Here.
Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All of council here, along with our loss listener, John Montello and myself. And also in the audience, we do have Tom Jordan, our economic development consultant. Item three is legislation. Can I?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for suspension of ordinance number 2022-7 and ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to apply and accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, energized community grants in the village of Walton Hills, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen. Vote on the, vote on the ordinance on suspension. Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of ordinance 2022-7. Second.
Okay, vote on the adoption.
Yes.
Jennifer Allen? Yes?
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2022 passed. 2022-7 passed 5:0. Okay, um, just for any residents that are watching or anybody else watching, we are going to go into an executive session if council makes a motion, so desires. When we reconvene from that executive session, there will. When we reconvene from that executive session, there will, um, not be any voting of any kind or any discussion. We will reconvene and adjourn after we reconvene, is that correct from council? Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We will also stop the live streaming before we.
That is correct.
Actually leave for executive session. So I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss economic development for 7845 Northfield Road, 7676 Northfield Road, personnel, the BZA position, and personnel with the police department.
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen. Vote on the motion, Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen.
Yes.
Raymond Whedon.
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle.
Yes.
Okay, motion to go in the executive session, passed 5:0. We will be shutting off the live stream, and as I said, when we do reconvene, there won't be any business taking place at that time. Okay. Are we off?
Not yet, I'm just giving this a minute to catch up.
Okay.